Sorry to be late. I'm getting out of work.
Thank you for coming in. Ready? You'll be on all night tonight, okay?
You're on.
Okay, we might as well go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the... Man, this is June already.
June eighteen.
The June meeting of the Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustment. With that, would you please do the roll call?
Roland Mayhew.
You here?
Yes.
Are you here?
Yes.
Steve Bogert.
Here.
Cory Gibbs.
Here.
Mike Foot is not here. Suzanne Hurley, absent notification. And Michael Delveckia.
Here.
Okay, so we got a quorum. Give a little housekeeping here before we get started. With four, that means we do have a quorum. And the vote is going to be an interesting way of doing it. So I want to explain it up front. That a three... You need at least three votes for a application to pass. A two-two vote is a not-passing vote. Whether it's a vote for denial or a vote for passing it. Either which way you look at it, you need three votes for it to be... To pass. So what I generally do is I make an offer at the beginning of the meeting. If there's any applications that would like to take a chance at the next meeting to see if we have more than four. You can opt up now. And we'll set you up for the next meeting. And if not, then we're going to presume you're going to sit and we're going to go ahead and go. Once we start, there's no turning back, okay? So, everybody want to continue tonight with the board of four? And does everybody understand? I'll take that as everybody, all the applicants that are present, wish to continue with the meeting. So with that, we'll get started. Acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting. Anybody have any additions, changes? Nope?
I move, we accept the minutes as written.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor? Okay? One last thing. Mike is our alternate. He's going to be a full-voting member tonight, so he'd be just like a full member. Okay, next on the agenda is down to eights, public hearings. We have no continuance, no extensions. So, public hearings, and the first application is 2019-0012, variance 11 Kingsley Ave. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article Six, Section 235-34, minimum lot frontage to allow for a boundary line adjustment. Lot frontage would be reduced by eighteen feet from eighty-five feet to sixty-seven feet. Would the applicant please come forward? Introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you.
Hello.
Hi. Can you pull that microphone up a little bit?
How's that? Better? I'm Nancy Rowley. I'm her neighbor. Susan is the person coming for the variance. We've been best friends since the beginning of time. We have lived next door at the Weers. Our great-grandparents lived there. And we would like to change the property line so that I can have a driveway. Well said. Thank you.
So your lot seventeen?
Yes.
So that I will give you thirty-eight? Total of thirty-eight... Forty-eight feet?
Yeah.
Is that thirty now?
Yeah.
Yeah, thirty now. What's the minimum in that zone? Frontage?
Eighty, I believe. As you know, Mr. Chairman, that area, virtually every lot, is non-conforming. Every structure is non-conforming. And...
Camp Meeting Association, it's...
This is an effort to make the driveway that's been used for many years to be actually on the property that it's associated with, which is probably a good thing. And as a side note, as you know, the city is in the process of adopting the... This Kingsley Avenue would be one of the streets that is in the... To be accepted as-is category. If that... When and if that occurs, likely to occur, but when that occurs... In the wintertime, there would be no parking on the street because then it would be a city street. Can't be parking on the street. So to be able to have their own driveway on their own property is a good thing.
And the streets are so narrow that in the summertime, it's very busy. And to allow for more off-street parking would be amazing.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
Is that place open in the wintertime or is that closed off?
No, it's open. The city maintains, has been doing some minimal plowing over the years. It's difficult, but they do it.
Any other questions at the moment? There being none, y'all can have a seat just for a second, please. I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name's Kathleen Cronin. I reside on the backside, so I am on Simpson Ave. And I guess my... I don't have an objection to the line change. I'm just curious as to what would be done with the actual land? Whether it would be paved, whether it would stay as grass? As some of you may or may not know, there's kind of runoff in that area and erosion problems. And there was a lot of tree removal in this area, same spots right now. So with not knowing what the tree removal will do in addition to if it's going to be a paved driveway, our house kind of is a little bit behind and set down. So the runoff would be a concern for us and I believe for a neighbor as well. So if it stays as grass, and right now there's crushed stone, there is, you know, the absorption exists. If they pave it, I'm concerned of now a river and the potential for it to, you know, cause structural issues for myself and for a neighbor.
Okay, I'll ask that question when we bring them back up.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Rillahan, and I'm here because my brother, Brian Rillahan, and his wife are uptown and weren't able to attend. I'd also like to mention that I don't believe that he received notice of the hearing, although his property does abut. This letter from him, do I submit that to you? Would you like me to just kind of give a narrative of its contents?
Whichever you wish, ma'am. Whatever, which way you would like to do it, make us...
Okay, I would like to submit the letter. However, I'll kind of go through it and give you the highlights. I'm also concerned and curious about the plan for this driveway parking. What does that mean? Does it mean, as was mentioned before, that it's going to be blacktop? It'll be crushed stone? Is it going to remain grass? This grassy area has been adequate rain absorption, but since those trees have come down, I'm sure there's going to be less absorption of the water that runs off from Tower Hill. Now, a few years ago, when my brother landscaped his property, it was under the regulations of the NHDSES, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services.
Which lot is your brother's?
Twenty-four Simpson Avenue. It's the property that faces the lake.
Okay.
He was directed by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to add numerous drain gardens, catch basins, and an intricate underground drainage system to comply with their recommendations or stipulations, whatever you call it. His concern is that if the driveway's paved and the way the land is, he will be directly below that runoff. And that influx of water that goes into that intricate drain system is likely to overflow it. That would undermine the work and the fifty thousand dollars that he spent under the direction of the NICS. So respectfully, more investigation maybe should be done and maybe a site visit or even maybe a call to that department, since they dictated how it was that he had to prepare this land.
Okay. And if you want to leave the letter with... Over there with the city, would you...
I just want to mention that he has no objection to the change in property. It's what's going to happen afterwards. And as was mentioned, if there is going to be a reduction of on-road parking, adequate parking is needed. But the way this property is located below, I think the runoff is going to be like a river. Thank you.
That'll be a question we're going to be asking. Okay, thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it... Close it to the public and bring it back to the applicants. Now... A driveway really doesn't have anything to do with this.
Can I put your minds at ease? I'm not paving it. It's going to stay grass. We had to take the tree down because it was damaged in a lot of the landscaping that was done in our neighbor's property. And then last fall, a big section of the tree broke off. So we did have the tree removed. And my intention is to have the stump ground as much as I can and to put in another tree and leave everything exactly as it is.
Okay. You just made a lot of people happy.
I'm glad. It's a very nice area and we're going to leave it that way.
Okay. Any other questions? Any closing comments?
Nope, it just would be nice to finally have real driveway.
Okay. With that, you may have a seat. We're going to close it to the public. Dean, you have any thoughts?
Nope. If they're not adding pavement, then it's basically status quo. You're just moving an imaginary line.
Okay. Any discussion?
I don't think so. I think it just...
No?
Yeah, if we're not paving, then I don't think... I don't see how DES gets involved at all. On the other lot, since that was right on the water...
Yeah.
Since that was on the lake, it would have been definitely, but this one I can't see.
I think it's to the City of Laconia that if you want to blacktop a driveway, you have to get a certificate from the city before you can do it.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, would you like to entertain a motion?
I would make a motion to approve application 2019-0012 for 11 Kingsley Avenue and 17 Kingsley Avenue for a variance from the road frontage to thirty-five thirty-two C. We are moving eighteen feet from seven... From eleven Kingsley to add to the frontage for seventeen Kingsley to enable seventeen Kingsley to have a driveway. It's basically a boundary line adjustment. Since both lots are private, this isn't going to affect any public property. It will have no effect on traffic. It will actually help keep cars from parking on the road and provide opportunity for the homeowner to park on her own lot instead of having to park on the street. There will be no alteration to the parking area itself. It's not going to be paved. And I would say that if in the future that intention changed, that the applicant would come back to the city and get the appropriate permits. These lots are already non-conforming lots. They're part of a very old subdivision. And the resulting non-conformity of sixty-seven feet of frontage for eleven Kingsley and forty-eight feet of frontage for seventeen Kingsley really is in keeping with the neighborhood. And the hardship is that it is in this very old area with very crowded conditions. And most of the... All of the lots and homes are all non-conforming.
Okay, we got a motion. We got a second?
Second.
We got a second discussion. For the record, let that be partial number 146125-18 is removing eighteen feet. And partial number 146-125-17 is the recipient of those eighteen feet. Filing addresses may change.
Oh, that's true. That's true.
So, if that's okay with everybody? A motion... We have a motion to approve it based on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it passes. Four zero. Enjoy your new driveway. Y'all have a good night. Okay, next application is application 2019-0015SC53, Walker Street. It's a special exception. Applicant is requesting a special exception from Article Seven, Section 235-41, Subsection Four, to create a detached accessory unit. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we may help you?
Hey, good evening. My name is Sean Cochrane. I'm the owner at fifty-three Walker Street. I built the garage bonus room back in 2016 with all my permits. Had the city come inspect everything, make sure it was good. With the desire, the hope, that long-term it would be livable. The goal is that for my mother, who's now sixty-three, long-term, that it would be a space. Obviously, the law was passed in 2017 allowing that. Long-term, that is my goal. Short-term, I'm releasing the divorce and in a financial stress. So I've started to rent the unit out effective two months ago to have excellent income, which is also allowed for the permit as well. So I've been working with Karen, who's been a godsend the last several months, to help me walk me through everything. I've been working with the state to make sure I meet every single criteria. The building has been finished for over a year and a half now. Has been no problems. So I'm here just to make sure that I have everything up to your expectations.
Square footage of the unit is?
Twenty-two by thirty, so six hundred and sixty square feet. So well below the seven hundred and fifty square feet maximum.
I'm sorry?
So it's below the seven hundred and fifty square foot maximum. And that includes the bathroom and everything. It's an open concept, so no walls inside it other than the perimeter walls.
Is this apartment going to be on the second floor of the garage?
Yes, it is. It's located on the second floor of the garage. So I park my vehicles inside the garage and the tenant lives above that. And has... I read the paperwork as well. The stairs aren't to be on the front, they're on the sides, between the house and the side. So therefore, there's nothing you can see from the street that abuts that or that is in the way.
So any other questions at the moment? Meets the ground here. So... There's no questions at the moment? You can have a seat for a second.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come up and introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike McFadsen. I live at forty-three Walker Street, which is the abutting residence just below the Cochrane residence. I apologize for my appearance. I just got out of my ninety-three-year-old mother-in-law's garden. And when she says "plant tomatoes," you plant tomatoes. So normally, I don't have an objection to what people do with their property. It's theirs. It doesn't matter to me what they do, what they don't do, until it affects me. But I object to this on principle and also because there is a little bit of an effect on our residents as well. First of all, when we go back to the beginning, when this was built by his former father-in-law, George Hawkins, there were multiple attempts to try and put a secondary residence in there with a secondary driveway. And there were multiple attempts and denials and all that type of thing because of one residence, one driveway, that type of thing. And then after that history with Mr. Hawkins, we were told that this was supposed to be a small garage with a rumpus room or playroom above. Unbeknownst to us, until early this spring, late winter, it became a rental property. There's now two driveways, the driveway that he described, but his tenant parks on the other side on the property line that abuts to the Lewis property. So I kind of object to it on principle. I also am not aware of the fact that it's ever been inspected or that there was even a certificate of occupancy issued. So I have questions about is the electrical up to code? Is the plumbing up to code? If it isn't, what needs to be done to bring it up to code? Obviously, for fire and safety reasons. But then you also have the city water and sewer. How was that done? Is he ahead of the meter, behind the meter? I don't think it's ever been inspected. I would also ask that the board confirm the actual measurements of the building because it looks much larger than what is described. And the way it has affected my property is because of the runoff and the erosion, it has created water in my basement, which we did not have consistently or prior to this building being built. And when I questioned Mr. Hawkins about it, he told me to put in drainage and pass the problem to my neighbors. I don't feel that's adequate. So that's where it's affected us. We've kind of been quiet about it, haven't said a whole lot. Because again, we basically feel like what people do with their own property is their business and not ours. However, again, this hasn't been done above board. It's the way it's been done. It's been done sneaky, under the guise of darkness, so to speak. And now we have a resident living there. We have another driveway on the street, which is, you know, issues that, you know, is not how that property's been treated. And in fact, we had a person on our street who, many years ago, wanted to put another additional living space in, and they were denied because it's a residential area and it wasn't designed to have apartments and that type of thing. And the original plan, as we were told by Mr. Hawkins, was for that additional living area of residence, was to be originally for Mr. Hawkins and his wife. This is the first we've heard about it being for his mother. So I question the veracity of that story to begin with. But that's basically where I stand on that. And it's created an erosion problem. And I leave it up to you. I would just ask that before you make a decision is that you actually do a site visit and ensure that the electric and the plumbing, the water and the sewer are up to code and they are not, you know, they're behind the meter, not in front of the meter, that type of thing.
Mike, are you on lot twenty-three here?
I'm lot number forty-three. We're directly below. It's his lot, our lot. We sit between the lot on the corner of Butler and his. We're that little small pie shape. Looks like the state of Nevada type lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public which to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time. Introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. I'll bring it back to the board. Dean, do we know that if this property had been permitted to...
Construction of the garage was permitted. I was going to ask the board if you approved the special exception to put a condition on there that any needed building permits for the living space be obtained and then a certificate of occupancy be obtained.
And if someone's living there now, I'm kind of curious how... It's not zoned or anything, correct? Someone's... If someone's living there, they would be living there because the property's not set up with a...
Right, I mean, that's why he's here, for the special exception.
Right.
Right.
The applicant, please come forward.
Yes, I guess I can answer that to his point. So I reached out to the city when it became evident back at the end of March that I wanted to rent the unit and reached out to the state. And I said, "Yep, no problem, it's a law." I was not aware, and Karen's been, again, the one helping me, that you have to have a special exception in the City of Laconia. Some cities don't have rules on that, Laconia does. So as soon as I was notified of that, the very next day, I was given an email. I did the application back in late April. I was away last month for work, so I was not able to... back in late April. I was away last month for work, so I was not able to, but then as soon as I'm here today to make sure that we do the right things the right way.
Now, is someone living there now?
Yes. So I did have a tenant move in the beginning of April.
Okay.
How long has that place been open and rented?
Since April.
Since April?
So last fall, last winter, I used it as, it was a man cave, a bonus room. Through the divorce, I've obviously had to inherit some serious debt. So I pulled up, spoke to a friend, pulled up the law, called the state, and the state said, "Yeah, you can absolutely do that, as long as you meet certain criteria," which I called them I did meet. So at that point, I had a friend that was looking for a place to live, so I reached out to said friend and said, "Hey, I have a place for you that'll make it." So, you know, it's a win-win for both of us. So could I address the concerns, I guess, of the other person, or is that up to you?
So did you pull a permit to have the bathroom and the kitchen?
Yes, yeah. At the point, like I said, it was a man cave with a bathroom in there, which it still has. So we did approve, through the electrical and the plumbing, they both were absolutely inspected. I had to install a little sump pump in my basement of my house. They came to inspect that. The guy came to make sure that you do a blow test to make sure that the pipes aren't leaking at all. He came into that as well. So absolutely everything was done per code. He actually came twice during the house being built as well, per complaints of Mike, just to make sure everything was done the right way. So he made several visits to the house as well.
Okay.
So the parking, there's plenty of parking in the map. You can see, even the first driveway alone, I have two spots in the garage. That's both my cars. Even right to the right of that, there's a spot right there. I do have limited in the lease agreement, it is a one person. That's allowed. That's it. So it is not like that. The denial of additional apartments, Mike is absolutely correct. Pre-two thousand seventeen, you couldn't add an additional apartment, and this is not that. This is an adjacent dwelling unit, and that was that law that was passed in two thousand seventeen. So the measurements, I'm more than happy to have the city come take a look and inspect it, and if they want to do that one last time, I assure you, twenty-two by thirty is the measure of the house. And there is about seventy-five feet that, between the end of the driveway and Mike's house, that is all grass. So there is sufficient, but if the state seems seventy-five feet is not sufficient, I'll do whatever it takes. I will be more than willing to help.
So the city's inspected it? You've gotten, like, a super on permit? You've been renting it since April?
Yep, since April. So the last two winters, I've been using it as a pool table, man cave type of deal. Friends come over, that type of stuff. I became divorced last fall, and then this spring, that's when I decided I need an extra way to come up with income.
Then why are you here after the fact?
Because I was not aware, and shame on me that I wasn't aware, that I had to have the city of Laconia approve that. So as soon as it brought to my attention, so I called the city and said, "Hey, I have someone renting." They told me who to call, who to do. We did a unit two, and then as soon as that happened, they said, "Hey, now that you're uniting, you can't do that without having this permit." So they reached out to me, and I immediately filed that permit.
Sean, it seems you have a lot of space between the garage and your neighbor's property. Can you put something in there to help with drainage?
If need be, absolutely. I mean, like I said, I would think seventy-five feet of grass is plenty. I mow it twice a week.
Put a berm, a landscape berm or something?
Yeah, that's what needs to be done, absolutely.
I would be, you know, more inclined to approve if you, you know, we want to keep your neighbor happy, that's, okay? That's the gall here.
Any other questions? Any closing comments?
No, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Any concerns or anything?
No, it's very reasonable, particularly if you add something familiar to the drainage problem.
It looks like the buildings are right on the property line, and his property is the one next door.
That's the house.
Again, that's, it's, that's the way they are. I mean, it's another old, one of these old neighborhoods, and they just didn't pay much attention. There were no setbacks when they constructed some of these houses. This is the year built, nineteen-hundred, so they just didn't care. It's like they parked the house wherever, wherever it looked good on the lot. Now, it would give them the most lawn, so we're gonna put it right on the line.
I'd be willing to bet lot twenty-five, which is just above it, I'm willing to bet you a corner of that's not even on their property, but I'd even say.
Really, then that's...
They build all these houses on the line?
Yeah. You've got accrochments all over the place in some of these older neighborhoods. And I think the, as for the square footage of the garage, I know the assessing card shows six hundred and sixty square feet. So I'm not overly concerned that he's built anything larger than he says he has, because the assessor obviously has it as six sixty, so. But I think that the drainage could be.
That's my concern, is that if we grant this tonight, and there's drainage problems over there, and no one's inspected it, the city hasn't been over, Public Works hasn't been over to see what is going on, and we approve it, nothing will ever happen.
Well, if we approve it conditional to?
What?
If we approve it with a condition.
It would have to be.
That something, that drainage be, extra drainage or something, something like a berm to?
Oh, my question is, is it being an A D U gonna, it's not gonna increase anything that's already legally there?
I don't, I mean, technically.
As far as drainage is concerned and stuff like that, unless they're pouring beer out the top window onto the ground, that's the only thing I can think of. But the garage is, the square footage of the garage is there.
Yeah.
And as far as the?
It's a very big garage, I can tell you.
So, and it's in, it meets all the setbacks and everything, so I...
And the plumbing and the electrical have been inspected.
So they say they can, we can have the city double-check that. I'm sure they will anyway, because it's gonna hap, with someone being able to live there now, it needs to, not only that, but the ceiling or the floor has to have something if they're parking cars in the garage. You can't have people living above it unless there are certain conditions met, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
Supposedly.
Would be ventilation, something for ventilation.
Well, doesn't Charlie Roofall go out and inspect these places when they're being built, when they draw a permit to build?
If they involve living space, in this case, when this building permit was taken, it was not going to be living space. So that would be my request, that you condition it on him getting any necessary permits that he needs, including an occupancy permit, if he still needs that. And we'll check the other things.
Yeah.
And if you want us to go out and check the possible drainage situation and suggest remedy, then we'll be more than happy to do that, too.
Okay. So. Any further discussion? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Okay.
Making up for vacation time.
I think so. I make a motion to approve application two zero one nine dash zero zero one five, Sean Cochran, fifty-three Walker Street, for a special exception, Article seven two thirty-five dash forty-one, for an accessory dwelling unit at fifty-three Walker Street. It is specifically authorized in the chapter. It's a sixty-six hundred, six hundred and sixty square foot unit. So it's under the seven fifty max and over the three hundred minimum, I think it is. The location has existing parking. It's over a garage. The driveway is seventy-five feet from the abutters property. It's only a one person residence. It's a, basically a studio apartment and limited to one residence, one resident. It was constructed originally not as a dwelling unit, but the plumbing and electrical were inspected when it was put in, and so it would need to have further city inspections and the condition that it received the necessary permits from the city regarding a dwelling over a garage and an occupancy permit.
Certificate, yeah.
Certificate of occupancy for the resident currently renting there. The lot size meets the standards. The only possible hazard is the one the neighbor brought up regarding drainage, and the city is willing to go out and check to see if drainage needs to be addressed on this site, and the applicant is also willing to take steps should the city decide that drainage needs to be addressed. The proposed location is appropriate. It is permitted in this zone, and it's, again, it's consistent with the spirit intended of the chapter and the master plan, as, again, it is permitted by special exception.
Okay. We got everything you need in there, Dean?
Did get it all.
Okay. We have a motion. We got a second? Got a second? Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor? Okay, it passes. You'll have to see, it passes, sir, and you'll have to see the city for further direction? Okay. Next application is zero zero one eight. It's a variance at eighteen Sanborn Street. App can is requesting a variance from Article six, section two thirty-five thirty-five B, side setback to allow for the construction of a twelve-foot by eighteen-foot shed. Would the applicant please come forward and introduce yourself for the record?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is John Adams. I'm the resident and owner at eighteen Sanborn. I have a, thank you for hearing me tonight. I have a printout of my points I'd like to make. I can submit those to the board at this time if you'd like.
Could you raise that mic just a little bit?
To the board, I'd ask that you would grant this variance for the construction of this shed in order to keep an organized and clean property. In addition to that, it also, the additional, a second additional reason would be for a safe, secure storage of property, personal property, on the property, out of the weather. In regards to storage being common in the neighborhood with sheds and garages, a shed in this location would fit in well and complement surrounding properties. In regards to the size and grade of the property, this location allows for the best use of the property. That relates to the fact that it's an odd-shaped lot. Due to the grade of the property, a shed in this location will fit well without having to excavate or change the grade of the property. This location would, will enhance the property value and will not negatively affect surrounding property values. And this will not negatively affect the view from the property or the surrounding properties. In addition to that, this construction in this location will not affect water runoff. And I do not, I would contend with the board, and hopefully you agree, that this variance would not be a conflict with public interest, because no hindrance or interference to other properties would exist. I'd like to thank you for hearing my request and ask that you grant this request.
So is this the only flat spot you can build a shed?
It's one of the few flat spots. There's probably a flat spot close to the street, but that would also require a variance to put the shed up against the sidewalk. Yes, sir?
Looking at the house from the street, you own that lot that's just to the left of your house. It goes down.
Yes, sir.
Is that where you're gonna put the?
In that, in that area, yes. On the south side of that area you just described.
How far in from the road are you gonna be? Twenty-five feet, thirty feet?
From the road? I have not measured that distance, but if I had to say, probably at least thirty. Actually, I think I have that. If I look at the overall lot size, does anyone know what the total lot size is off the top of their head? It's far back in that corner, so it's almost all the way back. I'm confused. This is his house here.
You have about a quarter of an acre.
That's your house?
I'm confused as to what is happening here.
I'm having a trouble making... Hmm, that doesn't look right.
Yeah, I can't get specific with your answer, sir, because I'm looking at the lot map, and I'm looking at acreage. So I can't, I can't do the math on that, but it's, it's two-thirds of the way from the street to the backside.
A hundred and six feet back, and he's, he's back quite a bit on that hundred and six-foot line.
Well, I think you don't have that map.
The road is here.
Pass that down.
We can't figure out what's on.
Yeah, this was, this was in the emailed packet. And the one, the packet that?
That's what I'm trying.
Yeah. That, because I was gonna ask you if we had something more detailed, and then I looked at what you had emailed, and that was in the emailed one.
Yeah, the packet was.
Yeah, I didn't realize the packet was. The packet one didn't come through. It didn't pick up the, yeah, it didn't pick up the detail. So his shed is gonna be in that corner. This is the road, the street right here. And he's got his, his house.
You got a pool in your backyard?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I printed off the same, somewhere I printed off the same picture that you're looking at. Yeah. Which is why, because at first I had thought.
We didn't get these maps.
We got them, we got them in the emailed packet, Roland. I got them in the packet that Karen emailed to us.
Forgive us for a minute while we orientate ourselves. So there's the driveway, and it looks like right there. Here's the pool. There's the house.
Where's the, the street?
There's the street. There's driveway, the house.
Right, okay. This is where?
He must have put it back there.
I was glad I went to know.
He must have went back here?
Right there.
Yeah, he's got all kinds of space here. It's about thirty feet.
There's a pool there.
No, the pool's in back of the house.
The only, the only difference is that the lot starts to slope up. So you could probably move it over a little bit, maybe a few feet. But when you look at the, when you look at the picture of the home, you can see that the lot, it's flat here, and then it starts to slope up.
Yeah.
So if you, you could bring it out probably a couple of more feet, which is what I was gonna suggest.
That's?
That's all open space.
This would, but right in here, except that it's sloped.
Well, that's, that's...
That's where I thought he was gonna put it.
That don't look like no big deal.
I think you would have to, you'd have to.
And degrade it a little bit.
You'd have to grade it. You'd definitely have to grade it, or you could put it beside the house, or move it back.
Put it back here, but not right on the other guy's property for, I don't know.
Well, no, and that was.
Yeah, this is all open space here.
Except that, Roland, there is a slope.
Yeah.
So if you, you bring it out enough to meet, bring it up to where it starts to slope.
The slope is only about ten feet from the house.
And this looks, this looks like my yard, which just goes all the way down, starts at the side of the house and goes all the way down. It flattens out in the neighbor's lawn, but I think you could probably bring it in, bring it in from the line.
Or you can sit and put some bricks underneath your shed, and not being a construction engineer myself, and not wanting to construct it here. Or you can sit and put some bricks underneath your shed and, and not being a construction engineer myself and not wanting to construct it here, but.
But I think that, that was, that was my, my only concern with that was that could he bring it out more from the, the line? And think right on top of the property, that was excessive, but. Are you looking at Shelby Street? Yep, that looks like the lot that he was, yeah, that's the line he was lining. So when you look at it on the street view, you get that.
I'm not too happy that we didn't get that, huh?
Yeah.
John, that tells us a lot more than this one does.
How come, you seem to have a, a good sized lot here? And your, your neighbor's upset that you wanna be right on the property line with the building, how come you can't come to the legal distance from the property line?
Due to the use of the land and the, the available area and the grade. I don't have a problem with coming, I don't have a problem with changing any of these numbers, I don't have a problem with coming out from the property line. But I would like to be inside ten feet to leave the open space for other use in the property.
Well, I can appreciate your wanting that but inconvenience, you know, these setbacks are set for a reason. And that's so that everybody gets to enjoy their property as it is. And to inconvenience someone else so that you can enjoy more of your property, is that kinda neighborly? If you see my point, I mean, because we see a lot of neighbors and neighborhoods come through and they don't particularly, they start picking at each other over everything, you know, and it just gets worse from there. Still food for thought. Any other questions at the moment? There being none, you may have a seat. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward and introduce yourself for the record.
My name is face, you know, you just need us to come to the fore, she could put it in the middle of the lot.
My name is Richard Bennett, excuse me, I'm the abutter to the south. The placement of John's storage shed impacts me the most if he puts it three feet from the property line. Now, we're pretty close together, it's a neighborhood. And I don't see the hardship, I don't see why he couldn't put it ten feet from the line and still have his yard. And other than, I think it's convenient to put it over there, I, I don't see any real reason to, other than he wants to preserve as much green space on his side as he can. So, I, you know, I'd like to say that I think there's room there to put in a twelve by eighteen shed, that's a pretty good sized structure. And to put it three feet from the property line, I think is really crowding. And to say it wouldn't impact our property, I don't think that's accurate. I think it will adversely impact the property, so he may be protecting his own property values but he isn't helping mine at all.
Okay.
And we did send a, a letter in.
Yep, got it right here, I was gonna introduce it.
I have another copy if you need it, but.
You're here?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public which to speak for or against this application, please come forward, introduce yourself for the record? As the record indicate, no one else from the public which to speak for or against this application. Therefore I close it to the public and bring it back to applicant. I don't have any questions.
Can you think of any reason why you couldn't move it ten feet in? Give us a reason why.
Basically, there's no hardship here. Showing a hardship of why, because from looking at your property and stuff like that from what we've seen here, it looks like you have ample ability to locate that without having to go into your side setback. Okay, and that's why there doesn't appear to be a hardship for it, at least in my mind's eye. Okay? That's just my opinion, I'm one of four, but.
But that was my thought as well, and even with the odd shape of the lot, yeah, you can still angle it.
There's room.
Yeah.
So, I don't have any questions.
Mr. May, is that, Mr. Mayhew, is that how I say your name? Mr. May, is it, Mr. Mayhew, am I saying your name right sir?
Mayhew.
Mayhew, sorry. To answer your question, the only, I guess the only app, answer there would be, it would require excavating and after leveled, if you move it in, it's more centered on the property, requires leveling up the land to build on that area.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, any closing statements?
Uh, no, thank you for considering my request.
Okay. With that you may sit. We're gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. It's been closed to the public, we can't take any further input, thank you.
Yeah, I, for myself, it's just too close to the property line. And yes, it might grant, you might have to, you might have to do a little bit of excavating of that slight slope, downhill slope. But it seems to me that you can bring it out another five feet, I mean even a foot into the setback would be better than seven feet into the setback. I mean, I, I just, I just don't see, there's plenty of.
I don't see a room, reason myself to even put it in the setback.
At all, yeah.
Cause there's an, even though there is a s, a slight slope there, I'm not a graded person and so I don't know what that is, but I do know that you can put a shed on, on bricks, you can do all kinds, you could put sonotubes in place. There's all kinds of things you can do to, to mitigate that issue without inconveniencing the rest of the folks.
I do, I just don't see a hardship on.
I just wanna say one thing. When he builds it and puts it, and puts it in, make sure it's not, it doesn't encroach on the setbacks because he'll be back here again.
Well, if he builds it and puts it in and it, it appears, it appears that it encroaches on the setback, then he'll have to move it.
That side size need a building permit?
Yes.
So there you have it, it's gonna have a building permit and that means that someone's gonna inspect it and that means that whichever way it'll go, it'll go, so. Any other discussion?
There being none, I'd like to entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion of denial for this application based on the variance is not, is contrary to the public's interest as there's enough property on there, it appears that they're able to build the shed within, without having to be located within the side setback. The spirit ordinance is being observed by denying this application. Because there is substantial land that they could and there's other building methods they can use for leveling out the shed. Substantial justice is being done in the fact that the land can accommodate it and there's enough lot size for it to be done. The values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. By denying this, they would not be diminished. Literal enforcement would result in unnecessary hardship and the hardship has not been proven due to the fact that there are other alternatives to building the shed other than using the side setback as its current location. So we've got a motion. A second, discussion of the motion.
You have a second?
Yes, I just seconded.
Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the nun, denial. Okay. E Highland. Okay, next application is, make sure I got it right, zero zero one nine, variance eighty Highland Street. It's a variance, applicant is requesting variance from Article nine, section two thirty-five fifty-eight A, table of sign regulations to allow for an additional sign over and a, over and above, allow two signs and forty-two square feet maximum. App can please come forward to introduce yourself for the record and.
Mr. Chairman? Longboard number twenty-seven, Steve Smith in the substance. Representing the L R G A hospital. And then you hit put some, hands up, you should have had copies of these plans in your packet.
I came in, I was born in two thousand and twelve when the hospital was doing what they called the tower project which connected the hospital itself to the medical facility on Spring Street. I came in with a master sign plan for the board because we were redoing the entrance signs into the facility which are located down here on Elliot Street. And up here on Highland Street and they also put a sign on the facade of the, what do you wanna call that, entranceway into the hospital. And at that time I put together a plan, a master sign plan that showed all of the signs that were at the hospital. The, the hospital is currently undergoing renovations and modernization of their emergency facility to the rear that is really accessible from Elliot Street, it would be this area right in here. They are redoing the, the emergency room itself, access for emergency vehicles, pedestrian access into the facility, whole new facade, entrances in the front. Reorganizing the direction of traffic in there to get people in and out of the emergency room facility. So they are in need of additional signs or actually, they aren't all additional signs, some of them are changing, some signs that are already there. We are in the professional zone and under the professional zone, you're only allowed two signs on the entire site in forty-two square feet of sign area. And for those of you, I know you're all familiar with the site, I don't wanna be redundant in my presentation, but I think, I, I do wanna point out the fact that the Lexington General Hospital occupies ten and a half acres of land area. It is fronting on four different streets, it has seven points of access into the hospital itself. It has almost three hundred and seventy thousand square feet of medical office facility. It has five separate buildings that encompass that, it has over five hundred parking spaces on that site alone. So it's very important to move pedestrian and vehicular traffic in and out of the hospital in a logical manner and get them to the facilities they need to go to. And you can't do that with two signs in forty-two square feet, it's, it's unrealistic. And I fully appreciate and understand the fact that it's very difficult to draft a sign ordinance that fits everything. There are occasions where it doesn't and this happens to be an occasion. If it was a simple doctor's office, you know, forty-two square feet and two signs would be perfect. But when you have five different buildings up there and the major building is, you know, three hundred thousand square feet of medical office space with activities going everywhere, entrances everywhere, you have to be able to get people in and out of this facility, off the streets and into the parking lots and then back on the streets and home in a logical manner. So we are here asking relief of your sign ordinance to allow us to put in a, a bunch of small signs and actually the signs themselves, under the categories, all meet the, the size allowed for the sign itself. But it's that total of forty-two square feet and only two signs that you can have on the site that really impacts our ability here to intelligently move people in and out of the hospital. Manner. So, we are proposing several signs, the first sign that I am proposing is sign A in the package, it's the emergency department sign, it's this sign here. And it's really an announcement sign, a directional sign, a freestanding sign. That particular sign is only eighteen square feet. And that sign is proposed to be located in this location here on your plan, that's the A, that's the sign that's there now, it's already a sign there. This is considered a directional sign, freestanding directional sign and then because it's conforming is that it, there's actually three signs attached to this and they're all under the four square feet. But if you total them up, there's like twelve square feet of, of sign area. We, we wanna replace that sign with that simple sign, that emergency sign and you'll look in your packet, you'll see that all the signs are basically color coded for the emergency area itself. So that would be replacing a freestanding sign that's there now. B is a traffic sign, they're do not enter signs, they don't really require your approval, but I wanted you to know we're putting, putting them on the plan. They're located in these two areas here, they're do not enter signs, they're street signs, they're traffic signs that don't require approval from this board. Sign C is again a directional sign, it's, it's a wall sign. It says emergency on it with an arrow, it's gonna go on the wall, it's only ten square feet, it meets the allowed requirements for a wall sign. And on a drawing, it's on the first sheet, it's this sign right here and if you can see it, it's actually, already has two signs there now. In this location, one on either corner of the building and it basically says the same thing. They wanna take down the two, they don't need the two, they wanna put up a new one, which is this one here. And I think it's actually a little smaller than the signs that's up there now. Sign D is at the entrance to the facility, to the emergency area in this location here. We have a doorway on this side that we wanna put an entrance sign on, which is the entrance into the emergency room for pedestrians. We have a sign on this side that wants, we wanna put up ambulance only because that's where the ambulance is gonna come in to the building. Again, they're wall signs, they're reasonably small in nature. But because of the fact that we can only have forty-two total square feet and two signs, we will need relief in order to facilitate that. Sign F is again a wall sign, the sign itself meets the size allowed for a wall sign. That's located on the building again and that just announces the emergency department itself and that's all it is, that is the emergency department. So people coming off from High Street and turning in here will be able to see that sign, people coming up from Elliot Street will be able to see that sign. All these signs that I've talked about right now, more than likely unless you really struggle to look for them going down, up and down any of these streets, you won't see them until you're on hospital property. They're on the campus itself. We have another do not enter sign that we're putting in, um, in this location here, and again, this is just a, it's a traffic sign, doesn't require your approval, but it was a master sign plan, so I've placed it on the drawing. Uh, and sign H announces the emergency room in one direction and the main entrance in another direction off from, uh, High Street. We have the sign here now, which is this sign here, uh, at High Street, and this is the actual entrance into the emergency area. So as you're coming up High Street, you'll see the sign that says, an arrow with the main entrance straight ahead, emergency entrance to the left. And if you're coming down Highland Street, it'll be just a sign for the emergency room right-hand turn. And again, this is a freestanding sign. The sign size meets what would be allowed for a freestanding sign, but because, and repeating myself, I know that, but because we can only have forty-two square feet of sign, we have to give variances on all these signs. Even though these signs are, are not large, they're, they meet standards for the type of signs they are, uh, we don't meet the overall standard. And then last but not least, we have a bunch of other, um, do not, uh, enter signs, which are traffic controlling signs, which are not under your purview, but I've placed them on the master sign plan because that is what we are supposed to do. I did fill out the application. I filled out, answered all the questions on granting of the variance. It's of record there. I don't think there's any doubt that we need relief. This is, this is really a, a, a public safety, uh, issue. This is an issue for not only the residents here, but this is a regional hospital and people come from out of town. You and I know the hospital well. I know where to go to get to the emergency room. Not everybody does if they don't live in Laconia. Uh, same with the emergency vehicles. If they aren't from this area and they haven't been here before, they need signs to get in and out and get to where they want to be. So we would request that this board, uh, continue to give us relief on the sign ordinance to allow us to place these signs up, which are basically directional signs. They aren't advertising signs. With the exception of the one on High Street, all of the others are in the interior of the campus itself, and, and more than likely, you won't see them unless you're there at the hospital, uh, doing business at the hospital, and you have to be there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Uh, sign H, is that lit? LED lit or...?
They're all LED lit.
Okay.
Signs, yes. And they're, they're on the labels there. With the exception of the, uh... With the exception of the emergency room sign, and that's a light, they're not background lit, that's a light at the top, LED light down onto it, and it says that on the, on the, the application itself for the, the detailed plans.
That was F. Where it says emergency department?
Yes.
That's the one that looks like it's top lit, shattered down.
Right, but it's an LED also.
Yeah. Any questions? Of the applicant? There being none, I'd like to go ahead and open it to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, I bring it back to the board. Any questions of the applicant? Going, going. Any closing comments?
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. In the new, in the new future, if approved, uh, destination, the signs would still remain the same as the old.
Uh, under the new urban, under the new urban commercial zone, uh, they would be, uh, the professional zone goes away and it gets encompassed into the urban commercial zone. The amount of signage and size of signage would increase under that zone, but I'm not sure that it would be enough to cover everything that they're asking for.
That's fine. That's fine. I was just curious.
It would definitely be more than the forty-two square feet, but I don't think it's going to be as, as, as much as, not that they're asking for a lot.
No. Well, I think myself that when you're searching, and I have, because I have kids, and searching for the first time looking for the emergency room was quite an exhilarating experience, and to find the appropriate entrance and everything, you know, because that's the last thing you want to be thinking about is your kid's chin's bleeding and everything, you know, so it's not what, you know. And these, to me, are more directional signs than they are for, like a street sign saying only right, only left. I mean, to me, they remind me of that. It's not an advertising sign where this is, uh, something other than what it is, something to benefit the public at large and at small. With the LEDs, it doesn't appear that it was gonna, uh, leave the campus itself, so it shouldn't be intruding on any of the neighborhood, and the street sign itself. So I don't, myself, really see an issue. Makes sense for the public safety. It makes sense. It's not going to have any adverse effect to the neighborhood itself because they already have signs there anyway, and it's just going to be an improved signage package.
It makes sense to me. From where I, where I sit in my office, I can see the number of ambulances a day that go up to that hospital, and a lot of those ambulances, some that, some of them are ambulances that we haven't seen before. Every once in a while, a, a different ambulance will come in, and I'm sure they've got to know where they're going when they get up there. So I don't see a problem with directional signs at, at the hospital, especially the way that hospital's been constructed over the years. It's kind of grow, grew like topsy, they say.
Any other discussion? There being none, like to entertain a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve application two zero one nine dash zero zero one nine, uh, LRG Healthcare, eighty Highland Street, um, for relief from the, um, for variance for Article nine, two thirty-five dash fifty-eight A. Uh, we're asking for additional signage in the professional zone for above and beyond the two signs and forty-two square foot maximum. And rather than reiterate everything that the applicant presented, I would just present the applicant's facts in support of granting this variance. It's very well laid out, very well set forth, and essentially, it's, um, the hardship, in short, the hardship is the fact that it is a huge site, multiple buildings, and the benefit to the public vastly outweighs any, um, detriment to granting a variance for more than forty-two square feet of signage.
And part of the hardship is the regional, it's a regional hospital, and you have a larger influx of people that may or may not be aware.
Yeah, as the, as the applicant pointed out, that the, the signs are, are essential for directing pedestrian and vehicular traffic, um, in a, in a safe and orderly manner.
Okay.
Question?
We got a motion? Got a second? Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion passes.
Thank you. Good night.
Signing away.
Okay, next application is zero zero two zero, variance twelve School Street. Uh, applicant is requesting a variance from Article six, section two thirty-five dash thirty-five A, front setback to allow for the construction of an eight by twenty-four deck with stairs. Would the applicant come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we might help you?
Yeah. Good evening. Name's George Landry, twelve School Street. Um, as you already stated, what we wish to do is put a deck on the front of the house. Uh, we do not meet setback. The house was built long before there was zoning, uh, and as many in that neighborhood, they're very close to the sidewalk and close to the street. We'll end up being, I think, and I forgot already, I think the setback is what, fifteen? There, am I correct? And we're only going to be, looking at my notes, if they did so good for me downstairs when they measured everything up, I think I'm going to end up seven feet. Um, what this will do for us is a number of things. First of all, is the side entrance, uh, if you look at the colored picture you got there, uh, the one without the, the deck on the front, it's really a poor entrance to get into the house. If the steps are steep, uh, it's a very small landing to work off of. The other one that shows the deck, just so you understand, um, what that is, is that's a picture that my wife got off the internet and we just cut and pasted to give you pretty much an idea of what it's going to look like. The biggest difference would be the stairs will not be where you see them because it's just too steep there. The stairs will be on the end, near the driveway, but they will be cut into the deck so they don't extend past the end of the deck, um, which, you know, again, leaves us more room in the driveway. So it's pretty, uh, straightforward. I'm hoping this is the easiest one you get tonight. And, uh, so if you've got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant at this time?
And just so you make sure, like I said, the picture that was cut and pasted is just a reasonable facsimile of what it's going to look like. It's, that's not exact.
So how big exactly did it say?
Eight by twenty-four.
Yes.
Eight by twenty-four.
What that will do for us is, is the front dimension, the, the length, the twenty-four, brings us just past the front door enough that then we can use that as the main entrance, which, when we have new steps that will be compliant, uh, and wider, uh, you know, it will make much better egress into the house and getting out, and that's, that's one of the biggest issues we've got now.
So your main entrance will be in the living room and not the kitchen?
Right, and if you saw the inside configuration of the house, it actually would sort of come in right between the two.
I've been in that house many times.
Oh, have you? Back when, uh...
Stock used to own it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant? There being none, you may have a seat for a second. I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time, introduce yourself for the record. Let the record, uh, indicate to the record, we did receive one letter, uh, from one fifty-nine Franklin Street. There are... They don't have any issues, it just, it appears with it, so I just wanted to mention that to the record, and if there's anybody else that'd like for them to come forward at this time. Let the record indicate no one else from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board, and with that, any further questions of the applicant? Any concerns about the city? Any closing comments, sir?
No, officer, thank you.
With that, I'm going to close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion. Looks like the hardship is it was built on the front side of the property, as with a lot of the older homes. There seems reasonable to the fact that the deck would be used so they can safely enter the property of the house and the entrance and stuff.
Neither door really provides a really convenient and safe access.
It would enhance, if they did put that little fire plot garden there and stuff, that would definitely enhance the, uh, the area.
But even, even without the garden, nicely, nicely constructed deck of the front would enhance the quality of the, the appearance of the house and the overall appearance of the neighborhood.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
There being none, like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application two zero one nine dash zero zero two zero uh, for a variance from Article six, two thirty-five thirty-five A, uh, for the construction of an eight by twenty-four foot deck with the stairs off to the right side, um, extending to, uh, into the, uh, fifteen foot front setback off School Street. Um, there'll be a total, um, encroachment into the setback of eight feet, leaving seven feet from the property line. The, um, variance is not contrary to public interest. It infringes on no other properties. Um, it actually will enhance the, uh, quality of the appearance of the neighborhood and the home. Um, the spirit of the ordinance is observed for the same reason. It's, it's a, a request, uh, for variance for the improvement of the home and improvement of access and safety of access. Uh, it will do substantial, substantial justice for the applicants in that it will provide a safer form of access ingress and egress into their home. Uh, the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished, uh, as the appearance of the home and the neighborhood in general will be improved by the addition of the proposed deck. Uh, the, um, special condition of the property is that the home was constructed, uh, many years ago, uh, with essentially the front of the house right on the setback line, and the only way to, um, enhance the property by building a deck is to extend into the setback. Um, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provision and the specific application because of this, the fact that it's a small lot and the house was built prior to the requirement of, um, adhering to zoning, and the proposed use is a reasonable one. It will give better access, uh, to the home, better and safer access to the home, and will enhance the appearance of the neighborhood.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Okay, motion passes. Enjoy your, uh, please see the city at, for your permitting issues and stuff like that, okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night, sir. Okay. That's it? Nope, got one more.
No, only one.
Got one more. Application zero zero two one, southeast, uh, Endicott Street East. Applicant requests a special exception from Article five, section two thirty-five dash twenty-six. Uses permitted by special exception to establish a photo vote. by special exception to establish a photovoltaic solar generating facility, we'll call it that. Applicant, please introduce yourself for the record and tell us how we might be of service.
Thank you very much, my name is Philip Hastings, I'm an attorney with Cleveland Waters and Bass, I represent New England Solar Garden. The applicant before you today, I have Ted Van Zant from New England Solar Garden and Ting Chang from Nobus Engineering, our engineer on this site. We're asking for a special exception to permit a solar farm on the former municipal landfill When Ted's done decorating the board, I'll turn it over to them to give a brief overview, and then I'll be happy to go through the special exception standards.
Very good, thank you.
I'll make my overview very brief. New England Solar Garden responded to an RFP the city put out for ways to get income from the closed landfill at the end of Sterling Drive. And we responded with an offer to lease the land and build a solar array, and since then we've met with city council, or been involved with city council meetings about three times, I think, have an agreement to lease the land with them in place, and have had meetings with the city, hosted with the neighbors, to talk about the project that were publicly And so, we're now in the, in the process of trying to get the zoning and planning board approval.
Okay.
This is the closed landfill up in the Weers on Route eleven?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you, Ted, good evenings, my name is Ting Chang, I'm with Nobus Engineering, as Ted's mentioned, the site is at six fourteen Endicott Street East. The site's about sixty acres of land, a little bit shy of it. It was capped back in the eighty with synthetic membranes. The site itself, if you see, look at the site, see if I can point this out. Thank you. So we have, I highlighted it in, I'm not sure you can see or not, I highlighted it in yellow, that this is the cap area underneath here, and then there's another portion that's cap area underneath here. Currently, we are accessing through Sterling Dry, there's eight feet wide gravel access throughout the site to, for the maintenance. So for the proposed, we are proposing about five point seven megawatts of panels, that's sitting in a bolster, concrete filled bolster, so there will be no digging into the ground, will be with the steel frame, is that correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, on the solar itself, so we are proposing it about five point sevens megawatts on the landfill itself, mostly is within the capped area. Most of it sit on the slope that's less than ten percent, if anything more than that, it will be too steep, so in the area that, such as this area, that exceed ten percent, we're leaving it vacant as it is. We're not distributing any more land that's already been clear as a landfill, we're not disturbing any, clear any more woods, or disturb any of the wetlands within the site. So all works are already, will be proposed within the clear area on the capped landfill. That's pretty much the scopes of the work.
With respect to the special exception, our application went through the several standards. This property is in, mostly in the RS district, we noticed today, when we got the full survey, there is a small corner of the site here, that's actually in the RR one district, but power generation facilities are allowed by special exception in both districts, so the, the argument is the same. I won't go into a lot of detail on the application, it's fairly clear cut, this is a very passive use, there are no employees, there are no visitors to the site, there'll be some construction traffic to the site during the initial construction, and otherwise, the panels are self-sustaining largely, other than routine maintenance, so there's no issue about traffic congestion, there's no demand on public water, public sewer, any public utilities, it will not generate any increased need for municipal police or fire. It's a very safe use, there's no potential for health hazards, so from a public safety standpoint, it's very clean in terms of energy and in terms of how it operates. The proposed location is perfectly suited for this use, it's a capped landfill, there are virtually no other uses that you could put on this site, so it's taking an unproductive piece of municipal property and creating, generating revenue for the city that's needed. And in that regard, it's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So the, we're happy to answer any questions you have about this, we think we've met the standards for special exception, and we'd like your support. Thank you.
Is there a building of some sort that's gonna provide interface, or is there?
No.
How does this interface with the power grid, or does it, or?
It does interface with the power grid, the ever-source medium voltage lines come right by here, and so there's.
There is a, if I can find that out, there is a power lines, overhead power line sitting right here, right now, so what we do is, we have.
It's this power line here.
It's this power line here.
Yes.
That we're gonna sit and tie into here.
We tie into there, and so there's no building required, it's just, they may put some poles in to, to mount some disconnects.
That and a meter so you can get paid, right?
Gotta make sure the meter's right. Most important part. So the city can get paid, too.
Yes. And the drainage, my presumption is the drainage has all been addressed and everything for putting these in?
That's.
Drainage.
We will be working with the city and OT to address that.
Okay.
City understands.
It's a mic question.
Yeah, yeah, this, this special exception is for the use, as you know, and then after this, they will be going to the planning board for site plan approval.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
This, this may sound stupid, but where does the electricity go? Why don't you?
The electricity goes onto the grid, and we get credit for it, because we've generated, it's like a little power plant.
And where is the grid?
The grid is right here, there's, there's medium, ever-source medium voltage power lines, it goes right by the site, so again, it's a perfect, perfect site, because we're right there next to tying into the medium voltage power lines. Doesn't get any better than the site.
So.
Yeah, you answered the only question I had, I was concerned when I saw that it was the landfill digging, but you're not going to be digging, so that was my, my main concern.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions at the moment? Y'all may have a seat for a second. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I bring it back to the board. Any further questions?
Sounds like a good use to me.
Any closing comments? Y'all good? With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
It's a good use for this, this site, there's not much else you can do with the landfill.
I remember when they capped that.
They've been dealing with the neighbors and, because the other thing I had thought of was that it, it does the butt right up to Governor's Crossing.
It, it does.
But, but on the other hand, when you bought it, Governor's Crossing, you knew you had the landfill behind you.
There was a neighborhood meeting last summer, which I attended, along with a number of other people from the city and the, and the applicant. As I recall, the two major concerns were, of course, the construction activity, which will be fairly minimal and quick, and then the, and the access to it from the, the site afterwards is, you know, an occasional maintenance vehicle, you know, pickup truck type situation, so that, that's a, and then the other major concern was whether the solar arrays would be visible from the neighborhood, and the, the belief is that, that, that they would not be. And then we also talked about maybe right along that ridge there, along the road, that during the site plan process, that we would probably maybe require a little bit of screening, vegetation or something like that, just to, just to fill in, there's a few spots where there's not a lot of vegetation right now.
Okay. Any other discussion? There being none, like to entertain a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion to use. Matter of fact, as I read through this, we'll just go ahead and use the, for the motion, what the attorney used. There are no conditions or anything for it, other than, well, there is no conditions, it seemed like it covered every base that I would just speak of, so with that, I'd go ahead and like to use his motion, okay? So there's my motion.
Second, then.
Second, discussion of the motion. All those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience. Y'all want any of these pretty little pictures or anything?
Need any of that? But you must have all the plans, you mean?
Uh, any other business before the board tonight?
Just wanted to let you know that the request for the special exception for a short-term rental on Peachy?
Peachy Street.
Peachy Street is been appealed to Superior Court.
Okay.
We may, so that is proceeding, it's just started the process, we may relieve the situation with the proposed short-term rental proposal that we have currently before the city council, which is probably, probably going to be referred to the planning board at Monday night's meeting, and then the planning board, we need a couple of months to post it and do a public hearing and those kinds of things, so it'll be about three months at a minimum from this point in time before we would be enacting the short-term rental proposal if the city, you know, chooses to complete that process. So we could potentially beat the Superior Court and make the situation moot, but we may not beat them, so we'll, we'll see what happens, but anyway, it, it is before the Superior Court at this point in time.
Is that the one by the middle school thing?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else before the board? Things are moving along swiftly and smoothly, so with that, like to make motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn? Second?
Okay, all those in favor, hey, good night.
Who actually made that?
That was me.
Okay, I second.
It's not often, but I.
Everybody's moving to adjourn.
Everybody wants to make that motion.